Hi, everybody. We are here in Foster City doing a protest to protect the geese because the city council is considering killing them to address their population and the poop that they are bringing. And Eric's speaking about this, so I'm going to show you.
Our animal bill of rights, where all animals are protected by the law.
We have our Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights banner here. This is part of the Week of Action for Rose's Law, with people all around the world participating in demanding basic rights for animals, including the right to live and the right to a protected home or habitat. These are basic rights that are very relevant to the geese here in Foster City, who may soon be losing these rights. All because they poop, and the city council's not happy about it. And we have press here from NBC Bay Area documenting this. They've already done multiple interviews, including in English and Spanish. So we're reaching a lot of people with our message today, asking Foster City City Council to protect these geese, not kill them, to pursue non-lethal methods to mitigate the population, including habitat alterations that keep them out of the areas where humans are.
Foster City City Council meetings last week because the 2023 plan for the geese was on the agenda. And many people showed up, many people came either in person or over Zoom to make a statement, to make a comment about that geese plan for 2023. And every single one of them said something along the lines of, "Don't kill the geese. Killing is wrong. These geese are part of the community. We don't want you to do this. We want to find a way to peacefully coexist with the geese. If there's really a problem, we can find a way to solve it that doesn't cause harm to living animals." And yet, the city council just went ahead and pushed ahead with this plan. They seem hell-bent on killing the geese. I'm not quite sure why. They look kind of bloodthirsty, but there must be something else going on. I don't really understand. But I noticed a couple of things. One of the plans they talk about when they want to do is to kill.
Thank you, Michelle, for your support, and Linda as well. Thank you, everybody who's watching and sharing and commenting, spreading the word.
Is there a word that any of us uses as everyday conversation? I'm pretty sure. I'm not sure if I was even familiar with it before this issue came up. But they really like that word, and then they like to say, "Depopulate."
Tonya's talking about the euphemisms that they use for killing these birds, like depredation and depopulation.
pruning a rose bush, you know, it's just culling. And I'm not saying hard content is counted skilled, but it doesn't immediately in your face say, "We're taking away lives."
Thank you, Stacy and Marcus, for your support. Please share this livestream if you can to defend the geese in Foster City, who may be killed just for pooping and trying to share the land with humans.
Each of the council members got to make a statement about the plan for 2023. And a number of them said something like, "Don't worry, there will still be geese in Foster City. And we're not going to exterminate the geese." And what I realized was, what they were saying was, "We're not going to kill all the geese. What are you so upset about? We're not going to kill all the geese." Because those of us somehow made it just or ethical that they were going to still let some of them live. And as far such as this might sound, what I would like to say to these council members is, "What if someone said to you, 'Hey, your loved ones, your community, these people who matter the most to you, they're kind of a nuisance. They're kind of creating a little bit of a mess that no one wants to clean it up. And so we want to deal with that, and so we're just going to kill some of them. We're going to just kill some of your loved ones. But don't worry, you'll still have some loved ones alive. You know, you'll still have some of those people that you reach out to when you need comfort or advice, or people who celebrate your triumphs. Do you? They still have some of those people in your life. We're not going to kill all of them." Well, duh, the council members would say that's ridiculous, and we're not even going to discuss it. And what they don't understand, what so many humans don't understand actually, is that it's the same. We, as a society and as a species, don't tend to see other species as the individuals they are. We see them as a cluster. We see the geese as a nebulous flock. And we don't see that they're individuals in that flock, and they have different relationships with each other, and they have friendships within that flock, and they have loved ones, and they have certain geese that they look to when they're worried. The predators around them, the geese are only better spotted.
Thank you so much, Sally, for sending stars and supporting.
You know, and I know you could say that this is silly talk, and it's not. I mean, researchers have documented this in every species. They have complex relationships and different roles in their communities. The city council members need to understand that these geese are individuals, and killing just some of them is not okay. Killing any of them is not okay. And this is why we need an animal bill of rights. Because silly humans who aren't thinking things through and haven't learned to really see other species as they are are going to push ahead with harming animals as though it doesn't matter. And this is why we need Rose's Law with defined legal rights for animals. And one of those is the basic right to not be killed. And that is why we are here. That is why we are going to fight for every goose in Foster City. And that is why we are not giving up.
That was Tonya with Direct Action Everywhere, speaking about the situation in Foster City, where the city council, who we are protesting today, are considering killing a huge part of the goose population here just because of complaints about their poop contaminating the water. And in the process of discussing this, they had false reports about E. coli in the water, which was actually misnaming what they had found in the water. Extreme laziness here. They didn't even get it right. There's not E. coli in the water. But of course, that caused a public scare and made people think that something drastic needs to be done to address these geese, who are just trying to live in their natural habitat alongside human beings. So we've been out here protesting regularly. Foster City residents, even who aren't animal rights activists, are outraged about this proposal from the Foster City Council. And activists, including Eric, who helped organize today, have been at all the meetings since this became an issue and plan to continue to be at all the city council meetings here, protesting and putting pressure on the city council. And it's been successful so far. At first, when they considered this proposal and sought approval to kill Canada geese, which they have to do because they're a protected species, they got that approval, the protests began, and then they declined to go through with it this year. But just last week, they reapplied to consider it for next year. So while the geese are safe right now, thanks to activists speaking up in person and online, we still continue to fight for the geese and their right to live next year because they're not safe yet. So thank you to everybody who understands how ridiculous it is to be killing these birds just because they are... I'm being told I have to get my backpack, so I'm going to grab my backpack. But we're here in Foster City City Hall, and we're marching a short walk away to the Parks and Rec building because the Parks and Rec Department is complicit in this decision. It's really on them to be testing the non-lethal methods, and they have fallen quite short in that regard. They have not experimented enough with mitigating the issue of, you know, the issue of these birds sharing space with us by altering their habitat or by using certain robotic predators to scare them away from the areas that humans don't want them, which is a little bit ethically questionable, but it is something that is out there on the market. You could buy a geecinator, and they go and scare the geese away from certain areas. There's a lot of other things that they could be using besides just rounding up the geese in the night and gassing them to death. And yet, they're not pursuing those means. They're not putting enough effort into those and testing them out here in Foster City. So we're walking from City Hall now to the Parks and Rec Department office, and we're going to be continuing to protest there. And yeah, I see a lot of supportive comments. Marcus asking, "How can they kill a protected species?" And Linda saying pigeons, geese, seagulls. Oops, I lost it. Only usually frequent places. There's so many comments. Your comments keep getting buried. I'm sorry. Let me try to read this again and turn this around and show you the group that's marching. Well, Alexi is asking, "Where can I learn more? I just came across this and don't know what this is about." Well, this is an action that's part of a broader campaign for Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights, which is what you saw written on that banner just a minute ago, that I'll show you again when we get to the Parks and Rec Department. And that is a campaign calling for five basic rights for all species, for all animals. And those include the right to not be killed or exploited by humans, which is relevant to the geese population in Foster City, California, because they may very well be killed by humans for no good reason other than pooping and living. And also the right to a protected home or habitat, which is also relevant to these geese because they're just trying to live in their home and habitat, and they're being endangered just because of humans not being happy with them being around and not thinking that they have a right to that space, to that habitat. And Rose's Law is also includes the right, it also includes the right to have your rights represented in a court of law and enshrined in legislation. So when rights of these animals are violated, they have a course to pursue. They can have a way to get justice, which animals currently are deprived of. And these rights, you can look them up at roseslaw.org to see what I'm talking about if you want to follow along, just to answer your question about where you can find out more about Rose's Law. But specifically with Foster City, if you're in the Bay Area, please check out dxc.io/events, and you'll see upcoming protests that we have to protect these geese, which is a time-sensitive issue. We have managed to protect them, not just us, but in defense of animals and other just individuals. And Foster City have come out to protest at City Hall regularly. And they have really put the pressure on and gotten the city to back down from killing the geese this year, but they're still considering it for next year. And so that's why we're continuing to protest. We want them to take this option of killing the geese off the table completely. And for that, we need to keep the pressure on. So thank you to everybody who's supporting. Linda says, "Tell that council to flock off." That's funny. Eric, who's been out here regularly protesting, wrote a blog recently that you can find on the DXC website at dxc.io/news. And the title of it is something like, "Calling Fowl on Foster City's Proposed Kill of Water Fowl." And there's a lot of plays on words here that we can do, which is a fun way to get people thinking and paying attention to the issue. So thank you to everybody who's helping spread the word. I see Alexi's watching from Texas. That's awesome. People all over can really help by sharing the livestream and also by signing the petition at roseslaw.org to be plugged in and hear more in the future about these actions. This is the Rose's Law Week of Action, which is happening all around the world. So our action here in Foster City is to protect these geese because that's a very urgent issue here. But there are people all over the world who are doing protests in their area. There were Rose's Law banner drops in Toronto and various cities in the United States just over the last couple days, and there will be more actions all week long, elevating Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights, encouraging members of the public to sign on and support. And yeah, Linda's saying, "Can I sign as a UK resident?" Absolutely. So the campaign is global. We have people all over the world calling on their government bodies to enact Rose's Law. And we don't know who's going to be first. It's a big race, you know, to see who will lead the way on these issues. One of the tenets of Rose's Law, one of the five rights that is listed in this proposed bill of rights, is the right to rescue, the right to be rescued from situations of distress and exploitation, like Rose, the hen was, the hen who this bill is named after, Rose's Law. And that actually has been supported by two different government bodies already. The Berkeley City Council and the San Francisco Board of Supervisors for the entire county of San Francisco have endorsed and unanimously passed a Right to Rescue Resolution, which says essentially, animals have the right to be rescued when they're suffering, and they condemn the prosecutions of non-violent animal rescuers. Activists like myself, who have gone to factory farms, documented the conditions, and helped animals who are suffering. I'm facing eight felony charges. Eight already. I'm only 24. That's a lot of felony charges to have racked up at this point in my life. But it's just because the government is hell-bent on protecting the status quo that supports corporations and supports these human supremacist ideas, like, "Oh, geese who are pooping who bother us, we can just kill them." And people who are going into factory farms to help animals, they need to be imprisoned. Just so desperate to deny animals' basic rights. So Rose's Law is challenging this and also telling Rose's story. It's challenging this denial of animals' basic rights by telling a really inspirational story about one hen named Rose, who we found in an Amazon-supplying factory farm in Sonoma County, California, where a lot of wine is made and a lot of animal agriculture is happening too. And people think in Sonoma County that the backyard farm, you know, the farms in their backyard in their own county are humane. But in fact, what we've found in multiple Sonoma County farms is that animals are starving to death because in these massive farms, they don't get individualized care. They don't get access to food or water if they get sick or injured, and they can't walk to food or water anymore. And so they struggle. They fall. They collapse on their back. They can't get to food or water. They're dying. And when activists report this cruelty, the authorities in Sonoma have failed to take action. So we went and we helped these birds ourselves. DXC activists went in, took footage, helped animals, and have been arrested doing that. So in response to that, we've been campaigning for the Right to Rescue. You can learn about all of our animal rescue cases at righttorescue.com. We're here at the Parks and Rec Department, by the way, so I'm going to get up to the front to show you this banner again, which is nicely unfurled. But the Right to Rescue is just one of five rights under Rose's Law. And you can see all of them at roseslaw.org and learn more about this campaign. Rose was actually rescued from this Amazon-supplying factory farm because when we were there, being stopped by the police, holding these birds, activists had birds in their arms who had wing injuries and leg injuries, who were very sick, who were struggling to survive. They looked literally like they were on death's doorstep. The police were stalling and waiting for more reinforcement to come before they ultimately arrested 58 people, including myself, on felony charges. But when that happened in the process, one officer had compassion and said, "Okay, you can take the sickest bird out." One officer making that choice saved Rose's life, and she didn't know it was going to happen. But as a result, people around the world who were watching the livestream, who read about it in the press, who saw this on social media, were inspired by this story that Rose is alive because one police officer had compassion and knew that Rose deserved to be rescued. And if Rose deserved to be rescued, then all of them did. Then if even the police officers who are charged with enforcing a violent status quo knew that the animals deserved better, then how could any of us deny that animals deserve these rights? When it's so clear, when you're presented up close with animals who are suffering, who deserve help, it's undeniable that the right thing to do is to help them. And that's how Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights was born, as a campaign, and people around the world have been taking action since then. This is the four-year anniversary of Rose's Rescue. This is the fourth Week of Action for Rose's Law. I'm going to just show you what Eric's saying now. All right. I don't know exactly what the plan is here today, but it seems like we're going inside the building to confront the Parks and Rec Department in person. We'll see. Thank you, everyone, for your support. Rebecca's saying these council members have no compassion. I think it's hard for them, even if individually they do have compassion, to be the one to speak up when everyone around them and everything around them is endorsing a very violent status quo. Just like the police in Sonoma County, when they were all saying, "No." And we were crying and pleading and saying, "We have cars waiting, and look at these birds. They're sick. They're covered in blood. They can't walk. Let us get them help. We have cars waiting to take them to the vet." And they wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't. And then one female officer finally said, "Okay, take the sickest one." You know, it's really hard to be that person. That's why I'm so grateful that that sergeant was willing to save Rose's life. And so I think it's hard for the city council too, but we want to change that. We want to normalize animal rights. We want to call for Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights, even though we know it won't happen today, it won't happen this year. But it's a long-term goal. It's the end goal of DXC's roadmap to animal liberation. And we're calling for it now because just by bringing it up, we can help normalize just and compassionate decisions for animals, like protecting the geese, despite some complaints from residents. And so we're out here raising awareness, specifically today, trying to protect these geese, walking through the building here, where different events are going on, and spreading the word a bit loudly and disruptively, but doing it with a very just goal, which is just giving animals basic rights that they deserve and under this broader campaign of Rose's Law. And we're not the only ones. We're out here in Foster City today, but people all over the world are participating in Rose's Law Week of Action 2022, just as they have in 2021, and 2020, and 2019, every year since Rose's Rescue in September of 2018. Stephanie says these banners are perfect in terms of animal abuse. Geese are a protected species. I'm glad that you think so. This is a banner that we have created to advocate for Rose's Law, and we will continue to use it in various actions. But it works perfectly for today, I agree, because what we're talking about is nothing too outrageous, just letting these animals have their most basic rights. And Marcus is saying, "If there's poop, then just clean it up." Absolutely. You know, if you want to do something nice, go clean up the poop instead of complaining about it and saying, "We need to kill these birds." Jess is saying, "Thank you so much for doing this work. Wish I could be there." Thanks for your support, Jess. And if you want to join actions in the future, please check out directactioneverywhere.com and hit the Events button. You can find events that are happening online, if nothing else, but there also may be events in a city near you.
Let the geese live. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live. Don't gash the geese. Let the geese live. Don't gash the geese. Let the geese live. Geese feel pain. Just like us. Geese feel fear. Just like us. Geese feel joy. Just like us. Geese feel comfort. Just like us. Geese have family. Just like us. Geese have friends. Just like us. Geese deserve to live. Just like us. Geese deserve caring.
So you can see the water here. We're in a really beautiful city in Foster City. And one of the complaints people have had about the geese is that they're contaminating the water with their poop. And that's been misreported as the water being full of E. coli, when in fact, it was a different bacteria altogether that was found in the water that caused this scare because it was misstated as E. coli. Seems like really lazy work on behalf of the Parks and Rec Department and the city council by not doing a better job of spreading accurate information and helping people understand the non-lethal methods that could be pursued and putting those into practice here, implementing them in Foster City and tracking the population of the geese in response. Instead, they want to jump the gun to kill these animals. And you know, that's just not an appropriate response to people trying to live their life, whether they're humans, or geese, or dogs, or any other animals. They shouldn't be killed just for trying to exist. Jill's saying, "Humans need to leave geese alone. They only want to live their lives unharmed, just like us." Absolutely. And Ross says chanting, "Animals feel pain, just like us. Animals feel fear, just like us." And in all the ways that matter, animals are just like us. And that's why they deserve to have the same basic rights as us, enshrined in law. I think sometimes when people hear that, you know, animal rights activists want other animals to have the same rights as us, they think, "What? You want them to vote? You want them to be able to, you know, have all these specific, human-oriented rights?" And it's like, "No, we want them to have whatever rights make sense for them to live their best life and exhibit their natural behaviors." So the right to be free and not owned, they don't want to be owned. Maybe having a protective guardian, someone who's looking out for them in their best interests. Sure, that's great. I have two bunnies at home, and I take care of them. And they've been domesticated to the point where they can't survive out in the wild. And I wouldn't want them to be thrown out into the wild to be eaten, of course, but they're not property, and they have the right to be treated as individuals. They have the right to live, to not be killed or exploited by humans, and they have the right to be free, not owned, but cared for by a loving guardian. And they have the right to have their rights represented in court so that if I wasn't a good guardian, someone could step in on their behalf and help them. But currently, because animals are treated like property, the only rights that they really have are the rights of the, quote, "owner" to say if their property was stolen or misused. And that completely denies the perspective of the animals from having any importance in court proceedings or in legislation. So that's one of the really important pieces of Rose's Law, is just enshrining the right for the animal's perspective to be relevant, for them to be relegated to be people who have rights and not property. Patricia's saying, "You're doing a great job. Thank you for protecting these beautiful geese." Well, a huge shout-out to Eric and to Foster City residents who have been coming out to these protests regularly. I've been at some before, but I haven't been at all of them. And I know Eric's been at many of them and continues to come every meeting to address this issue until they decide permanently to let the geese live and not use lethal methods. I think that would be a huge win for specifically the geese, but also more broadly for the Rose's Law campaign because if these geese deserve to live, then so do chickens, and so do pigs, and so do other animals. If animals of one species deserve the basic right to not have their bodies exploited by humans, to be free, not owned, to have a protected habitat, to have their rights and interests protected by a court of law, then why don't other animals deserve that as well? So this is really just a stepping stone, but we want to jump on the opportunities that we can, where there's a lot of public support, to elevate this issue and call for rights for animals.
We're protesting against city council propositions to acquire permits to kill geese in Foster City and urging them to only pursue the multitude of non-lethal options available, especially considering the verdict isn't even out on whether there is an actual issue with geese species in the city and why their population has increased at a higher rate the past two years, beyond the fact that it's just simply wrong to kill.
The past two years, I've lived in Burlingame, nearby to Foster City. And once Eric told me about the threat the geese face here, I knew I had to use my privilege to help protect them. I've attended Foster City City Council meetings for the majority of around eight council meetings and attended two protests at a political rally held on August 26. Over the course of this time, I've seen the success grassroots activism has had on amplifying the message that killing sentient beings is wrong and that we walled back down to threats to kill the geese. Major media outlets, including KTVU, NBC, ABC, KP, IX, Palamundo, New York Times, and Mercury News have broadcast our messages. The USDA backed out of being the agency responsible for killing the geese, and the company Wildlife Innovation stepped in their place, but has recently backed out as well. It seems to be understood that killing the geese would create a negative reputation for the responsible agency and individuals. I've made multiple public comments in support of protecting the geese and in opposition to their permit to kill. And I've attended meetings where council members voted on acquiring the permit. I heard all of the objections by Councilmember Sullivan, who was the only council member who didn't vote in favor of acquiring the permit. He brought up several valid points, including that many of the alternatives were not explored thoroughly, if at all, and that killing the geese is not a solution and will not stop the root cause of why the environment attracts more geese to populate. And yet, the rest of the council members were unwilling to even address his incredibly valid points before voting for the permit to kill. Other elected officials have also spoken out in supporting and protecting the geese and in favor of alternatives. and in favor of alternatives. I personally spoke with president of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, David Canepa, who has been vocal on protecting the geese, even speaking at a rally that we held last month. He said in a Mercury News article, "I am urging the city council to accept the Animal Protection League's offer to pay for a comprehensive plan that will address the poop problem for decades to come, rather than relying on a short-term scheme to pay someone to snap the necks of these geese." Foster City City Council member Patrick Sullivan has been supportive of our efforts to protect the geese and also spoke at the rally stating that the right thing is protecting our environment and protecting the geese. There is no study out there indicating that if we take out so many of the geese, that the geese population is going to go down. Despite the multitude of animal advocates and nonprofit organizations like Direct Action Everywhere and Defense of Animals and the Animal Protection League, to name a few, city council is still resistant to taking off the table the plan to potentially spend $86,000 to finally dislocate 109 geese. At the last city council member, uh, meeting that I attended last week, multiple city council members entirely, and I imagine intentionally mischaracterized our concerns, just as Tanya said earlier, stating things like, "Don't worry, there will still be geese in Foster City, and we are eradicating them." Just to be clear to the council, one death is too many. Killing one goose is unethical and an avoidable tragedy. City council has heard many reasons why it's unethical and ineffective to kill the geese and several solutions that have been underutilized or not pursued, including repairing buffers, aerating the water, and landscape modification. One major point is that Foster City's landscaping of large areas of grass right next to bodies of water is a perfect habitat for the geese, and thus, this city is essentially enticing geese in and then proposing that we need to kill them as some supposed last resort, without even implementing any landscape modifications. Regarding the claim that they have a poor water quality, why isn't anything being done right now? If Foster City used to have an aerator in the lagoon back in 2019, now is the time to bring it out again. Aerators help fish who are dying off due to low oxygen levels, and they kill bacteria by pumping oxygen into the water. These are just a couple of the many non-lethal avenues to pursue. So this protest today, part of Rose's Law and Animal Bill of Rights, we are supporting this week with actions in several locations across the world, and we will keep showing up. And I do believe as long as we continue to show up, the powers that be will have to concede and hopefully learn through this process the need to pass Rose's Law so that all animals have a right to be free, not owned, or to have a guardian acting in their best interests. The right to be, to not be exploited, abused, or killed by humans. The right to have their interests represented in court and protected by law. The right to protected home, habitat, or ecosystem, and the right to be rescued from situations of distress and exploitation. As stated in Rose's Law, all beings have a right to be free and not exploited, and Foster City City Council is acting as if they have the sole right to decide what happens to the geese that reside here and could do a lot more to incorporate the voices of those in neighboring cities in developing a collaborative plan that centers the need to protect the rights of the geese who reside here. We need collaboration from the city council and involving animal advocate groups and individuals as well as elected officials outside Foster City to develop an ethical plan. The only thing that's urgent and dire in this situation is the livelihood of the geese and ensuring their protections against the powers that be. As Eric has said time and time again, as long as they plan to kill, we'll plan to protest. That's a promise. Thank you.
Woo! That was Ally Morikawa speaking about the Foster City geese situation and also Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights, getting some support from passerby here, which is great. Thank you, Ally, for reading out all of the five rights listed in Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights. If people want to see those again and learn more and sign the petition, adding your name to support, go to roseslaw.org. Thank you, everyone who's supporting on the live. Kimmy, thank you so much for sending stars. We really appreciate that we're able to get even more pressure on the city council from people who are online, even if you don't live in Foster City or in California. You showing that you agree that geese deserve to live helps change the, the moral equation and show how much pressure there is from the, the social pressure of people believing that geese deserve to live. That really does turn the tables and make it harder for anyone to, in the face of that, say they deserve to be killed just for living their lives, just for pooping, just for eating and breathing and being. So thank you, Rebecca, and thank you, everyone who's commenting.
Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live.
You'll probably be seeing and hearing more about this campaign as it continues. I know the activists here in the area are not going to relent as long as there is the chance to save these geese, save the lives of these geese. And as you heard both Ally and Tanya speaking about in their speak-outs, any, any number of geese being killed is too many. None of these geese are expendable. Their lives are not expendable. And for the city council to say that, oh, don't worry, we're not killing all of the geese, so you shouldn't worry about it, they're not going to go extinct or anything, is completely missing the point that this is, that's a human-centric response to say, oh, don't worry, you'll still get to experience the geese, you'll still get to see them. We need a geese-centric response that recognizes the rights of these geese to live, to be free. That's one of the pieces of Rose's Law is to have their interests, animals' interests, represented in court and protected by the law. But we're not even giving any thought to their interests in the current status quo and the way that our legislature is operating right now. Everything is human-centric, and if the geese are causing a problem by pooping in the water, then we can just kill the geese because everything is human-centric. And when you stop for a moment and you look at things from the perspective of the geese who are inhabiting Foster City alongside humans, everything looks quite different. It looks like some individuals are just trying to live their lives in peace, and they have some very basic rights that are being violated, or at least in grave danger of being violated if this plan that the city council applied for and, and is getting approved to be able to use lethal methods actually results in them doing so. Right now, we still have a window of opportunity to pressure the city council once again to not follow through. They previously got approved and they did not follow through earlier in the year because of pressure from activists and some supportive politicians who said, we don't want this solution. We don't want taxpayer dollars. Over 80,000 taxpayer dollars, not a small lump of change, being used to kill animals in our backyard who just want to live. So thank you to everybody who understands that message, who is seeing it from the perspective of the geese and not just the humans, and who is helping to speak in support by commenting here, by sharing. You could, you could reach out to Foster City Council. More broadly, this is part of the Rose's Law campaign. You could sign the petition at roseslaw.org and receive action alerts about other events and opportunities to protect animals' rights, to advocate for their rights at least. It's a long journey. Rose's Law is the endpoint of DXC's Roadmap to Animal Liberation. We know it's not going to happen today, or tomorrow, or next month, or next year, honestly, but we are getting closer all the time. And like I mentioned earlier, one tenet of Rose's Law, the right to be rescued from situations of distress and exploitation, has already been endorsed by government bodies right here in the Bay Area. So that's really helpful for adding pressure when we go to Foster City and other, other governments that are considering hurting animals directly to say, it's not just activists, it's not just individuals who think animals deserve rights. It's actually some government bodies who have passed resolutions saying animals should be rescued from situations of exploitation and distress, and the people who are rescuing them don't deserve to be prosecuted. I mean, as someone who's being prosecuted, personally, I'm really grateful to my city, Berkeley, and neighboring county, San Francisco, for standing behind me and saying that rescuing animals is the right thing to do. And I'm really grateful because it, it doesn't just help me, but it helps in other cases where we're advocating to protect animals and to endorse their basic rights, to be able to add the credibility of cities and counties standing behind us. So I'm hopeful that even more government bodies will enact resolutions, which, you know, are just statements of support. They're not even binding law. It's really not as big of an ask as passing a law, but just a resolution, just a simple statement, when there's a, a city or county making that statement, it's very powerful, as well as when there are huge numbers of individuals doing it. So that's why I would love for you to sign and add your name at righttorescue.com, specifically in support of the right to rescue, but also at roseslaw.org in support of all these five rights that we have identified that all animals deserve. So thank you so much. If people have questions, let me know. I'm going to turn this around again and show you the banner. We are at the Parks and Rec Department building now in Foster City, California. We just walked through this building a moment ago from the other side and marched through, and you could see that there are people, I can actually see them through the glass still, although you probably can't because it's not that, uh, it's a little bit tinted or, um, hard to see through. But there are actually classes going on in there and quite a few people working inside right now, so they are hearing us. It's a Tuesday night and there are people still here at work, and they are hearing our message, so hopefully that puts pressure on them too. And hopefully the sympathetic members of the department here put some pressure on their colleagues and say, I want the geese to live too, and I, I don't want to be protested, you know? So hopefully that helps.
Just like us. Birds want comfort. Just like us. Birds want safety. Just like us.
And here's Almira doing some outreach.
Just like us. Birds have friends. Just like us. Geese deserve to live. Just like us. Geese deserve caring. Just like us. Geese deserve compassion. Just like us. Geese deserve protection. Just like us. Geese deserve love. Just like us. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live.
Getting more support.
Animals feel pain.
Lots of supportive people passing by.
Animals feel fear. Just like us. Animals feel pleasure. Just like us. Animals feel joy. Just like us. Animals feel comfort. Just like us. Animals have family. Just like us. Animals have friends. Just like us. Animals deserve to live. Just like us.
I didn't know Peanut was here.
Yeah, Peanut came.
Just like us.
Peanut doesn't want to leave Kitty's side.
Just like us. Animals deserve protection. Just like us. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live. Birds feel pain. Just like us. Birds feel fear. Just like us. Birds feel pleasure. Just like us. Birds feel joy. Just like us. Birds feel comfort. Just like us. Birds have family. Just like us. Birds have friends. Just like us. Birds have courage. Just like us. Birds have fear. Just like us. Birds deserve compassion.
Yeah, Jackie and Marcus Peanut is adorable and won't stop chirping. She's very vocal in our meetings when she's at the Animal Rights Center chirping.
Let the geese live.
Do I have to?
Let the geese live.
Oh, it's so heavy.
Just like us.
Thank you, Alexi, and everyone who is supporting. We are marching back through the building, so I'm going to head back through one more time with this giant banner.
Birds feel comfort.
And we will be heading back to City Hall.
Birds have friends. Just like us. Birds have family. Just like us. Animals deserve to live. Just like us. Animals deserve caring. Just like us. Animals deserve compassion. Just like us. Animals deserve protection. Just like us. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live. Don't kill the geese. Let the geese live. Don't kill the geese.
Oh, thank you, Kimmy, for sharing the video with your dad, and thanks to everyone who shows more people the videos because we can tap into our social networks and reach even more people, and that's really a, a big impact because coming from you, I'm sure your message lands more powerfully for your own colleagues and friends and family members than coming from me or anybody else.
Geese have family. Just like us. Geese have friends. Just like us. Geese deserve to live. Just like us. Geese deserve caring. Just like us. Geese deserve compassion. Just like us. Geese deserve protection. Just like us.
So we are heading back to City Hall, just a short walk away where we started the livestream. We had NBC Bay Area out here doing interviews in English and Spanish and filming our protests, so that should be airing soon, which is exciting. It's a very helpful tactic to get pressure on the city council if we can get press attention because even more people will hear about the issue that way. And another thing is livestreaming, right? Getting the message out there on social media definitely helps more people hear about the issue. So I want to make another shameless plug to ask everyone to share the livestream. You can share it on your own page, or you can share it in a group where you think people might be interested, and commenting and liking and all of that is really helpful too, sending stars, everything. But if you could share it, that would be great because it shows that not only do people care enough to share, but also more people have the opportunity to like and comment and share and engage and learn a little bit about this. I think it's a really important story for people to know. But I'm going to turn it around and show you Eric now.
... I'm like a honey, so I'm tired today, and he did not want to come. But Derek doesn't want to come right now either, I guess he's in meetings. But, uh, dear Derek, hi, it's Eric. You know me very well. Uh, I'm sorry for being rude to you in the past. I do appreciate all the information that you've been giving me, and I also want to remind you that you said you would release the schedule. It's not just in your, uh, word, it's also in our Agenda 1816, I believe. But we want that schedule if this happens here. But you already know that there are two attorneys, and you know their names, they're going to try to stop this from happening. If they don't succeed, I will succeed. You will not kill geese, alright? We will be here at every city, every single city council meeting, just as we have, and next protest, it'll be in October. Hopefully you can come talk to us then. But remember, as long as there's a plan to kill, there's a plan to protest. That is a promise that I made on May 17th, and I will keep it. So I will see you soon, and just a reminder, geese want to live!
Just like us.
Geese want to live!
Just like us.
Geese deserve to live!
Just like us.
Geese deserve to live!
Just like us.
Do you want me to continue? Okay. Do you, do you want to share with the livestream just how long you've lived in Foster City and anything you want to share?
Just like us. Geese feel joy.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, and this will cut to him.
Hello there, my name is Lynette. I've been in Foster City close to 40 years. We've never had a geese problem until now, and we really don't have a problem. The problem is with the city council. We can't get them to listen to us. They're destroying our, um, our trust and our, our, the, 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 the threat of goodwill that runs through this community. They need to listen to us, pay attention, and do the right thing. Please, leave the geese alone and let them live.
So well said. Thank you so much for sharing. So Foster City residents are unhappy with this decision, and they're losing trust, and that's a real problem if you're a city government or any government that should be operating in service of the public and should be doing what their constituents want, protecting their interests. So yeah, Alexi and Rebecca are saying, thank you, Lynette. Huge thanks to Lynette for being here as the spokesperson and making sure that, uh, the voices of Foster City residents are heard. I've met many other Foster City residents at these protests recently, and even people who are not advocating for anything like Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights or other animal rights issues are very upset to have their city council defying their, their wishes and harming geese potentially by killing them when that's not what Foster City residents largely are calling for. There are some who are more concerned about the poop than the, the lives of the geese, but there are other ways to address those concerns that the city should be pursuing. So thank you so much, everybody. I'm not sure how much more is planned of the protest. We may be just marching back to City Hall and debriefing, so I'll walk back and see what's up, but if people have any more questions, now is a great time to ask. So if you have questions, feel free to comment them. Also, a couple other things that I'll plug is that we have all our events listed at dxc.io/events, and you can find other actions that are coming up for Rose's Law in different parts of the world, as well as online trainings and other things like that. And also, in less than a week now, a week from yesterday, so Monday, October 3rd, this week from yesterday, so Monday, October 3rd, this coming Monday, we have probably our biggest trial yet, yeah, our biggest trial yet, that actually will happen, because we've had big trials get, you know, delayed and charges dropped and things before. But this one, it's happening in six days in St. George in Utah, Washington County, Utah. I've never been to Washington County, Utah before. I'm looking forward to seeing it. Supposed to be a beautiful area with Zion National Park, but I will mostly be outside the courthouse, protesting and showing my support for the right to rescue. We were talking about the right to rescue earlier. I'm in a case here in Sonoma County, California, facing eight felony charges for helping animals in factory farms here. But my friends Wayne and Paul are facing felony charges for rescuing two dying piglets from a massive Smithfield factory farm in Utah. Smithfield, excuse me. Smithfield, if you don't know, is the largest pork producer in the entire world. It's the largest in the country, and it's owned by WH Group. So, Smithfield along with WH Group are the largest, it's the largest in the world. And this one farm in Milford, Utah raises over a million pigs for slaughter every single year. We call it the Death Star, because it is so massive, over 300 barns and over 150 manure lagoons on site of this one facility, this one plot of land. And it is destroying our planet, it is harming animals, it's harming Utah, it's harming workers who have to work in this facility. And this is the place that my friends Paul and Wayne exposed horrific animal cruelty and rescued two dying piglets. And now, they're facing felony charges, not Smithfield. And so, I'll be there at the Smithfield trial, showing the world that Smithfield is the one committing crimes against animals, and calling on the Attorney General, Sean Reyes in Utah, the Governor, Spencer Cox, and anyone who will listen to prosecute Smithfield and protect these pigs who continue to be exploited there, instead of prosecuting animal rescuers. So, if you can, you can head out to Utah to join us, but even simpler is sign the petition at righttorescue.com if you haven't already, and you'll receive action alerts and find out more of what's going on, get email updates during the week. Also, follow DXC's Twitter for live tweet updates, and hopefully, we'll be able to livestream there as well. So, there will be a lot of ways to stay tuned into what's happening in trial, even if you're not there. There's so much happening all the time, so many campaigns, so many important causes beyond animal rights and within animal rights, so many situations arise that need our help, where animals need our advocacy, because they don't have their voices heard in court. They don't have their voices heard by City Hall, and we need to bring the animals' perspective. So, whether it's the geese in Foster City, or the chickens in Sonoma County factory farms, or the pigs in Smithfield in Utah, we need to speak up for all of them. And that's why I, sometimes, as overwhelming as it is to care about so many beings on the planet at once, I feel really motivated by big campaigns where people all over the world are taking part, like the right to rescue and Rose's Law, because they see how much stronger we are altogether and how much public support there is right now. You know, Rose's Law, it's a big ask, but today, when we talk about these geese and we talk to the public, like Rocky right there doing outreach, he's been giving out a ton of leaflets, and we've been getting a lot of honks and a lot of support. People really care about animals, and when we can present the basics to them of what animals deserve, that they don't deserve to be killed just for pooping, that they don't deserve to be killed just for taking up space that we want to call ours, and when we can present a beautiful picture of a world where animals have rights and talk about that and bring it closer just by talking about it and making it a possibility for people who haven't considered an animal bill of rights before, then we find so much public support. So, that brings me a lot of hope. Rose's story continues to inspire me four years later, as it does for people around the world. So, thank you to everybody who is taking part in Rose's Law Week of Action 2022 in any way, whether that's just joining this livestream and commenting your support or sharing, or going out to an action or organizing an action in your area. There have been actions already in four or five different cities, and the week is just a few days in, so they will be continuing all week long. And I'm excited to see what's in store in the rest of these countries and places that Rose's Law actions are happening. On Saturday in Berkeley, we dropped a Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights banner over a freeway overpass, and that one was over 200 feet long. On the livestream that I did, which you can find if you scroll back on the DXC Facebook page a little bit to that post from Saturday, I mistakenly said it was 189 feet, because that's what I was told at the time. I wasn't making it up or eyeballing it and just throwing out a number. But apparently, it was a lot longer when it was stretched taut at the end, when it had been made. It was longer than expected, and then it was stretched taut over the overpass, and it actually was over 200 feet long. So, that's pretty cool. That was our kickoff action for the Rose's Law Week of Action for this year, and it was a pretty epic one, because we had our longest, biggest banner and banner drop ever. And I think we had over 60 people in attendance as well, who were holding colorful banners displaying the different tenets of Rose's Law, the different rights that are included in Rose's Law Animal Bill of Rights, lighting smoke flares there as well, and just capturing a ton of attention from passerby, mostly cars below, but also people biking and walking by on the overpass as well. We had a good spike of hundreds of visits to the Rose's Law website that day, so that's great. And even though we're not doing a big banner drop today, hopefully, we'll have a little spike today as well with roseslaw.org, especially if all of you who are watching this, make sure to go sign the petition at roseslaw.org after this. Rebecca's going to go sign. Thank you so much. Hopefully, people who are driving by right now can read this sign a little bit, but it's sideways, you know, it's not straight ahead of them like it was with the banner drop on Saturday, so I'm not sure. All right, we are almost back at City Hall. There's this very interesting clock tower structure here. And I think we're just going to be debriefing here, so I want to ask one more time if people have any questions, to please ask them in the chat, and I can even ask Eric and the other folks who have really been researching this more than I have and following the campaign even more closely. So, if you have a question, even if I don't know the answer, I can maybe get it for you. Oh, awesome, Tanya's saying, "I'll go sign too." Thank you so much, everyone. There's also some chalking over here from earlier. I love this quote, "As long as there's a plan to kill, we plan to protest," just like Eric said. "Nuisance is no excuse for animal abuse." That's a great one. "Compassion over comfort," yeah? "Every being poop, save the geese." "Love, don't kill." Oh, and there's a goose trying. I love Lynette's shirt, Team Non-Lethal.
Everybody, thank you so much for coming. So, I feel like I had a little vote, and I wanted someone who made this decision, a terrible dumb decision, would hear us. Well, Derek Swiger definitely did. I ran inside while Hallie was doing her speak-up, and I asked the receptionist if he's there, and he was. And then, he's like, "Oh, yeah." And then I asked, "Can we talk to him? It'll be uninterrupted, just be in him, one-on-one, professional?" He's like, "Okay, well, I'll go ask." Gets up out of the chair, walks inside to the door that was just right behind him. So, Derek was definitely there, heard us both. So, thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it. I appreciate you for being here. Thank you for sticking up for the geese. Was this anybody's first protest? Didn't think so. Y'all are like boil. And I appreciate you guys so much. The Wise Family. My name is Judy. Thank you guys for coming. DXC, you guys are my family. I love you so much. I want to read a newspaper article. It came out June 10 of this year, and I'll just start. Neighborhood Board Reverses Decision to Round Up and Kill Geese After Homeowners Speak Up in Johnson City, Tennessee. After outraged residents of the Hunter's Lake neighborhood spoke out against their homeowners association board voting to remove and exterminate its goose population, they feel their voices have been heard. "I was very pleased to know we could claim a bit of victory here," said neighbor Karen Frederick. Frederick and fellow homeowner Susan Carson have led the charge for months to alert neighbors that the board voted in March to receive a permit allowing the USDA to round up and lethally gas the geese during their multi-season, a time when they cannot fly, which occurs in June, and May and July. From the beginning, their goal was to stop the removal. "Let's be just a little more tolerant and try to coexist," said Carson. The announcement of the board's reversal follows a News Channel 11 report published in April, when we first spoke with Carson, Frederick, and several other neighbors who expressed their displeasure and shock at the vote. It's just the idea of the roundup and the idea that they are gassed just because of an inconvenience for people who aren't happy about an occasional goose dropping. That's really been a revelation to a lot of people. They say, "Gosh, I didn't, I didn't, they were really, I didn't think they were really going to kill them," said Carson. Friday, WJHCO obtained a copy of the letter sent to homeowners on June 9 detailing the board's decision to cancel the roundup. At the March board meeting, the Board of Directors approved engagement of the USDA to perform a recommended goose roundup to manage the significant increase in the goose population and associated mess, as observed earlier on the screen, in response to homeowner concerns. The letter reads, "To date, the goose population has significantly reduced as a result of a number of other mitigation efforts. The current situation does not warrant the engagement of the USDA. The board has approved additional wildlife management strategies so the lake areas are usable by the walkers while we coexist with wildlife. Neighbors Carson and Frederick were pleased with the announcement and hope it is permanent. We can't expect that we are going to be in total control of the environment," said Frederick. After the initial backlash, the Neighborhood Board also issued a survey found of 62 homeowners that responded. Thirty-four opposed the removal of geese. Twenty-two were in support of the plan to exterminate. Majority won. In the end, it showed that the majority of people who responded were in favor of them reconsidering this and going back on their decision. The president of the Neighborhood Board declined further comment to Channel 11 beyond the notice that was sent to neighbors. The board understands and recognizes the different views people have around this decision, as there is no one decision that will make everyone happy. We encourage participation on the committees and the boards to help manage our neighborhood in the best way possible. The survey responses from neighbors also included several suggestions of further goose deterrence aside from total removal, including increase the number of times the lakeside walkway is blown off, also known as just clean up the poop if it's such a freaking harm. Try grape seed, oh, yeah. The directors actually say, "Try grape seed smell deterrent by critter control, or good old fashioned grape Kool-Aid. Grape Kool-Aid, geese don't like, and there's something in it, methyl, something, 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 that it likes, it tickles their throat. So, they won't eat it. If you put grape Kool-Aid on lawn, geese will go away on their own accord. So, keep that in your back pocket, Mr. E. Increase the reminders to neighbors to not feed the wildlife. Foster City, we've been asking you so many times, just put up some freaking signs, please. But they won't. High-powered lasers, bird bangers, and bird screamers to harass the geese. Thank you, Lynette, for the suggestion. The goose-nator does work. Install decoy swans, or consider adding live swans to the lakes. Several goose deterrent efforts were already underway at Hunter's Lake. The population of geese has swindled since. The board added in their statement, oh my God, it's gone off. The board added in their statement, "We will investigate the cost of utilizing some of the, some of the additional methods, some of the additional methods identified by the questionnaire, should they be needed." That's a abrupt ending. But anyways, protests work. So, thank you for being here. We'll do it again next time, because if there's a plan to kill, there's a plan to protest, that's a promise.
Thanks, everyone. All right, that's the end of our protest. Thank you, everybody, for joining online, and I hope we'll see you again online or in person, maybe in Utah for the Smithfield trial, or in California, or somewhere else sometime soon.